Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Wednesday evening Bible study on Noah. It's great that we have a full house here in the fellowship hall and also a full house zooming at home. And this is just fantastic. I'm so glad that you've joined us. Let's turn to the Holy Spirit now and ask His presence as we go through and do this study. He would use all of this to build us up today. Holy Spirit, thank you. Thank you for moving each person to come and spend this evening with you in your word, to set aside whatever other things that might have been on the docket for tonight than they could be doing to spend time with you. May it be fruitful time with you. May you draw us closer to Jesus through what we study and in just the miracle of Scripture and the miraculous way in which you work as a God that saves. We want to lift these burdens off our hearts so we can better focus our attention on what's happening tonight. So Lord, we pray prayers, first of all, of Thanksgiving. We're thankful that no damage happened during the storms that went through tonight to any of us and that our power remains on. Thank you for your watchful hand of care over us. Grant safe travels to Joe and Connie as they go to Tennessee. Take them safely there. Bring them safely back. Grant healing for me and for all others in our congregation that are in need. Grant us patience as we wait for that healing. Give David healing after his accident. We pray that he didn't tear earlier injuries and if he did, that you would find ways and means to bring him to full health and restitution. Be with Bonnie and give her an answer for the eye problems that she's having and bring healing into her life that she might not have to continue going through this endless march of doctors. We give Thanksgiving, Lord, for all of your gifts, but especially tonight for the gift of modern technology and how we can use that to connect with family members and friends and be a gospel witness for you. Lord, we ask that by your wisdom, you would provide wisdom to all that is needed in our government, with our neighbors, and even with us. Stop, stop the violence that's happening in Flint. Stop the problem with drugs and guns and gangs. That problem is bigger than any of us can solve on our own, but it's not too big for you. Move people within government to address this problem. Give the police strength and bravery and the ability to fairly and justly deal with this problem. The Lord intercede in any way you can to make this better. Be with all medical personnel that are caring for those who are sick with a virus, but especially those who are dealing with the young children, the newborn children and other children. Grant them the ability to bring these children back to health as your healing hand. We give Thanksgiving, Lord, that Ron's vision has improved and we ask that you would keep it that way. Be with Jack as he faces surgery on Friday, that there would be no complications and a quick recovery for him. Be with Ruth's friend Jim, who is suffering with prostate cancer, that it hasn't, that we pray that it is not too far along and that he can be, that he can, he can be recovered and brought back to complete health. We ask for safe travels for Nancy and Bing as they go on vacation. Take them to their destination. Bring them safely home. Be with all the kids who are starting back to school, that you would keep them safe. Be with the school administrators, that they might enforce mask mandates and distancing as needed and be with the parents and the teachers. Give them understanding and grace. Protect the teachers from sickness and may parents step in and support what the teachers do in the schools. Finally, Lord, we ask that your hand of safety would be over back to the bricks, that it be in a safe, enjoyable time, carefree of any violence and anything that happens. May we be able to attend and therefore be a witness to you. All these things we left up into your tender care, trusting in your love for us and all God's people respond.
Okay. I feel stupid.
Yeah. All things are possible with God.
Absolutely.
So tonight, I sent an email around and I don't know how many of you saw it, but we're not going to watch the video that we've been watching the past two nights or the past two meetings, because we've already seen it a couple of times. But I will have a video for you tonight and it will deal with, has to do with has Noah's ark been discovered? So that's coming up. We've got some stuff on that. In the meantime, anybody want to give us a recap of what we've been talking about, if you can remember? Will I do what I should have done before and get my, get my additional things ready? We've been talking about, what was this, what's the subject of the last video? Yeah, the size of it? Was it possible for all the animals to be on it?
Yes.
What else?
Dinosaurs.
Dinosaurs. What did we say about dinosaurs? Were there dinosaurs on the ark?
Yeah.
Yes. How is that possible?
Babies.
They were babies. Most of them weren't big. What else did we talk about?
The tools that they actually had back then that were able to build the ark.
So would it have been a problem for Noah to build the ark with the tools that he had in his hands?
Obviously not, because he did it.
Well, that's a great argument, Faith. That's true. I mean, what, how do we, how do we, how do we normally picture Noah? We don't picture him as a caveman. We kind of picture him with some pretty simple tools, with a wooden chisel or something like that. And how advanced could his tools have been?
We don't really know.
They were good enough to get the job done.
Yep.
What?
They could be advanced.
What's that?
They could be very advanced.
Yeah. What, what, what is an argument for the advancement of tools and knowledge? What great argument do we have from Scriptures?
You mean against that?
For it.
For it. Well, they built a boat.
Yeah. I think about the longevity. How long they live?
Everybody's so amazed at what he did, based on how he did it, that they actually kind of, kind of used that as a foundation to build what they're building today.
We said that people were, people were old enough to have developed things, you know, through their length of living, you know, with some of the metals and...
We, we, we said that people were living 600, 700, 800, 900 years. And let's say three quarters of that, you're productive as a human being. I think probably longer for them. But if you can be productive and taking in knowledge and skill for 600 years, how much could you learn? And how much knowledge could you have had? If, if you're somebody that designs tools, I'm thinking of Herb. How much could you do, Herb, really? How much could you come up with on your own? Think about it. 700 years and you don't have any problems with your body. You don't have problems with strokes or aches and pains. You're productive. How much could you do? And, and not just that, but then we, we had the, the witness from Scripture of the, of the guy that was working with metal before the flood. And so he was working on iron. So they probably had metal, iron tools to use. There was somebody that was working on developing musical instruments and music, which means they weren't hunting and gathering the whole time. They had extra time to do things. And we wouldn't know anything about any of that stuff anyway, because it's all destroyed. Right? So we really don't know. So, so, but, but assuming that they weren't as intelligent as us is a wrong assumption. What's that?
I said they had a, he said they may have had the internet. I said, no, they had a tin can.
We have to remember that when God created Adam, Adam was like an encyclopedia 10 times, 20 times older. He was not... I didn't want to say stupid. But he was very intelligent. He passed that intelligence on. Now, maybe there was a lot of things that were lost because of the flood, but man has never been big.
We talked about one of the, one of the examples from Scripture of that passed on intelligence would have been the Tower of Babel. They were able to build this huge tower. And so they had the tools and the knowledge. And then God, what they were doing was they were disobeying God's command to spread out throughout the earth. So God came down and gave them different languages. That explains why you have the Mayans in South America that were building basically what's like the pyramids that the Egyptians built. And that, that top, that's knowledge that was common and shared. But certain, certain knowledge seems to have developed more in other areas, some than other areas. So that also gives credence to the fact that they split. Some had this knowledge, some had that.
I got a little plaque or something from Th宜man many years ago when I was doing something and it said, now I forgot what I was going to say. Anyway.
Did Noah, the dog make the plaque?
Probably, no, probably. Something about God's plans with God's supplies. Man's plans. I'm sorry. I can't remember.
If God plans that he will, he will do what's needed.
If he wants it done, he's going to make sure you have the stuff that needs, sorry. I can't remember how he says it.
Which is true about Noah.
Right.
Noah was able to build the ark while God gave him the design. Here's, here's your other thing too. We don't, we don't know exactly what it looked like. We have the basic dimensions. We're not sure if it was a rectangular cube, if it was curved, and if it had that wing thing at the end and a rudder. We don't know that it had those things because it's not included in Scripture. It could have.
I think it's man's plans with God's, will never lack God's supply.
Man plans, God directs his steps.
There you go. Anything else you wanted to add about what we saw in the video?
People thought it was stupid.
People thought, well, they probably did. We don't have that in, in Scripture either, but it's, it's likely. I mean, why the heck is this guy building a boat out of the middle of nowhere? We don't know if there had been rain. We're assuming there hadn't been rain. We don't know for sure. But probably, probably there was nobody building boats at that time. And even if there was, it's a good chance that nobody was building a boat that big. It was quite an undertaking. Herb brought up a good point. He had 100 years to build 120 years. The guy we saw in the video talked about it might have been less. We don't know. Once again, it's, any, any time that you look at dating, especially before the flood, you can't be certain. You can count back generations and there is some hints about time. But the Bible is not the history of the world and it often does not include every single generation. And so if you count generations from Adam according to Scripture, it's possible that some were missed just because they're, they're not needed in the story. And the story is basically about how man fell and we needed Christ to come save us. So if it doesn't serve that purpose, you might, it might not have been included. So in some of the things we're going to see, we're, they'll talk a little bit about dating, but keep that in mind. We don't know. There's young earth creationists and old earth creationists. We don't know. We don't know how long the earth has been around. I tend toward the young earth idea, but we really don't know how long. We know the dating that scientists do is often flawed. Radiocarbon dating, if you've had a fire, it negates it. Plus, as far as geological things go, when God created some rock that had a half-life of uranium, he created it with a half-life. He didn't create a uranium with full life and it degraded from there. So what, what amount of uranium was in this rock? We don't know when he created it. Same thing with trees. First, you cut down a tree on the, on the eighth day of creation, it's got maybe 40, 50 rings. It's eight days old. So from there on, all of that counting is skewed in some respect. God wanted us to know. He would have gave us the number. We just trust in faith, right? That's basically where we're at. So where we left off is on page seven of your study guide at the top. And this directs something that I bring up a lot in sermons because I find it a really, really great illustration for the church. And that's how the ark, the ark is a great illustration for what the church is, the church of Christ or being in Christ. So if somebody want to read at the top of the page there before the first bullet point.
This is on page seven.
Page seven of the top. Where it says, there are many, page seven at the top.
There are many similarities between the ark and the flood on the one hand, and Jesus Christ and Judgment Day on the other. In both cases, God's wrath is poured out on a hostile, unbelieving world. Again, in both the flood and Judgment Day, God graciously provides a way for people to survive the desolation, the ark and Jesus Christ. Powerful forces battered the ark, threatening to destroy it. Likewise, on Good Friday, powerful enemies joined forces to batter and destroy Jesus Christ.
It makes a lot of sense, doesn't it? You think about the last day. And so here you've got the flood and, and the flood had its own purpose. That was God who was cleansing the world from just, it was so evil. There was only eight people that believed in him. So he was cleansing the world. But he also has another motive. And this is true of a lot of things. There's a mere, a mere association when prophecy comes and then there's a complete that comes later on. So maybe the more complete fulfillment of what the flood stands for is the last day. And so how, how is the last day like the flood?
It's going to come at a time when we don't know.
Yep. Because the people, despite the fact that they had Noah's witness there, they ignored it. So they didn't know.
They were living lives as normal.
Yep. Which normal was?
Not evil. It was evil.
Yeah. Without faith in God, disobeying God. How else was the flood like, like the last day will be? Think about.
Faithful were saved and the non-faithful feared.
Somebody at home was going to say something on Zoom?
Judgment.
Yeah. It's judgment. So in the flood, God judged the evil world and found it guilty and found it deserving of death. And on the last day, God will judge the unbelieving world and find it guilty and deserving of eternal death or separation from God.
After both of them, there's going to be a new.
Yeah, we'll get to that.
It's going to be restored and new.
Right. Who is going to be saved? Who was saved in the flood?
Righteous.
Righteous, which were Noah and his family. And why were they righteous? Because of faith, right? And on the last day, who will be saved? Why? Because we have faith in Jesus.
Jesus.
Noah, yeah. Noah didn't know who Jesus was, but he had faith. He had faith in the promise given to Adam that one would come that would crush the serpent's head. And he didn't know, maybe he knew a little bit more about that, but he trusted in faith, even those things that he didn't completely understand. And that's faith for us too, isn't it? So now Reverend Art said, what, what is, what happened at the flood after the flood was over? How new? What was new about it?
Restored. Well, everything died in the flood. I mean, you know.
So it was kind of creation restored. Was it completely restored though?
The ark was the seed of creation.
What's that?
The ark was the seed for creation.
Seed for recreation or redemption. But yeah, the, the plants weren't as healthy as the original growth. That's why Noah had to start meat eating. So it wasn't a complete restoration of creation. It was partial. And the eight people that got off the boat, they were righteous, but were they perfect?
No.
How do we know that?
Nobody has.
Because Noah, what, how, how did, how did, was Noah, Noah an example if you can't fix stupid right after he got off the ark?
He got drunk.
And?
He laid there naked.
Laid there naked.
And then a son, one son, said, oh, look at that.
So a lesson to all you fathers, don't, don't lie around the tent aching.
Mark clothes and dries.
So if it wasn't, that the people that got off the boat still had sin, how is it going to be different on the last day?
Nobody's going to ever shame.
Sin's, right. Reverend Art nailed it on the head. Sin's gone. You and I, the sinful hearts we have, that sin has been purged. You no longer will have sinful, selfish hearts. You'll be able to love the way Jesus loved. We'll be perfect. It's something that we can't imagine because we've never, ever been that. And that's why there'll be no death, no crime, nothing bad, because all the bad stuff that's in our heart, because remember sinful words and actions come from a sinful heart, is all gone. Want to talk about true peace? The peace that the hippie wanted but can never get it? You'll have it on the last day. And enduring forever. Real peace. And no politicians. Any other, any other, any other thing as far as comparing the ark and Christ or the flood in the last day? Noah, Noah was on the ark by faith. And we say the church is like the ark and we're in the ark of the church by?
Faith.
Faith. And who, who decided that Noah and his family would be on the ark? Who's the one that said, these guys?
God.
Who's the one that chooses who will be on the ark? It's the church?
God.
God. Through your baptism. A lot of similarities, isn't it? So ark and the flood is a worthy study because it helps us understand something even more important on the last day. So as we think about Jesus and on Good Friday, how powerful enemies joined forces to batter and destroy Jesus, just like the wind and the rain battered the ark. Our first question there is describe the various things Jesus suffered as he bore the brunt of God's judgment on Good Friday. Yep. Beatings, beatings with? Whip with a cat o' nine tails, a whip that had little metal shards at the end. So when, when they whipped, they would pull it back. So they raked across your back and pulled open flesh. Rods. He was beaten with rods. When you met before Caiphas, he was beaten with closed fists. He was punched.
Then they made the crown of thorns and put on these things.
Crown of thorns. And finally? Nails in the hands, nails in the feet.
Humiliated.
Humiliated. Yeah. It wasn't just physical, was it?
His friends denied him. It was, it was just completely.
He was mocked.
Mocked. Yeah. No, Reverend Art brings up a great point. Noah was mocked. Christ even more was not mocked because he's the God who saved everyone in the flood. He's the God that had come to save out of love and the people that he was dying for were viciously, you know? Why it keeps coming to mind is I've got the power to come off the cross and to actually just spite whoever's talking and they're, they're saying it, oh yeah, you're Jesus right. Sure. Yeah. Come on, come on down. Let's see it. Come on. Give us some of that wrath. Come on down from the cross. And he's got a, he's got a human body. He knows pain. He's experiencing every bit of that pain. It's not blocked out. He knows pain. It's been said, when you look at how much he suffered, the divinity within him, the divine nature kept the human nature alive. If not for the divine nature, as a human, he couldn't have suffered that much pain. He would have died. That's so. Yes. You see that in the garden, don't you? It was, it was a combination of the physical, but that's, that's another aspect too. That's spiritual. Taking on the weight of the sins of the world, somebody who never sinned.
And, and. I was going to say, not in the sin of the world to come, you know, since we weren't around, but yet it was our sins that he took upon himself as individuals now. That's, that's mighty.
And because of all that sin, what happened between him and his relationship with the father? My God, my God, why have you forsaken me? Full of sin, the father could no longer gaze at the son.
Look at the sin.
Turned his back on, so all of his time on, on earth and before that, before he came to earth, God the Father and God the Son were always together. And for this one moment on the cross, the father turned his back on the son. All of his human, human, human friends turned his back. And then finally the father does it. He hung there alone.
That was probably the greatest pain of all.
Yeah.
Because that's when he really cried out, my God, my God, why have you forsaken me? You can just feel the pain in the words.
And when he was mocked, he said, ask God for, to forgive those people because they don't know. They weren't doing what they were really doing.
How hard was that? How hard would that be for you to say?
Especially with nails in my hands.
And then said this before, but on the cross, he didn't die so much from the nails in his hands and the nails in his feet. Those were to keep him affixed. What you died from when you hung on the cross, as, as Ken was saying, he points to his chest, is because your leg muscles give out and you can no longer take a breath sometimes. Yeah. So as you're hanging there, your body goes limp. It's down. And for, in order for you to take a breath, you have to push up on your feet to raise your diaphragm to take a breath. And every time he does that, his back is raw and open from the whips that raked across his back. The cross is not a finished piece of wood. It's rough. And so as he takes a breath and raises his body up, he feels that wood go into his back and open up those sores more and just hurt. But he has to do that to take a breath. And his legs were just aching every time he has to push up. And he's losing blood and he's losing, he doesn't have enough water and probably his legs were seizing up. Yet he continued to push up and take a breath until it was time for him to, till he had suffered enough to say he suffered hell for everyone. And that's the other thing too. Despite all this, what's the last words he says on the cross? It is finished and into your hands. He didn't turn his back on the father. He stayed in faith to his father, in that relationship, and commends himself over to the father. And the father turns back to the son and says, welcome home, my good and faithful servant.
And he also saved the feet.
What's that?
He saved the feet.
Yeah.
You know, I, I don't remember where in the Bible it is, but you know, it said, Jesus wept, you know?
That was one.
That was Lazarus, when he died, you know? But Jesus wept. And I've always thought, I don't know, maybe it's because I lost a daughter, but I always thought when, when the Lord and God turned his, had to turn his back on Jesus because he couldn't look at the sin, he must have wept too. I mean, that's, that's just my, my picturing it, you know, because the love, you know, I mean, that is, well, it's part of it.
God is love.
Yes.
Unconditional love.
Unconditional. We, we have an illustration of what it was like for father and son in that moment. And that goes back to Abraham and Isaac.
Yeah.
When Abraham has to give Isaac on the altar.
Oh.
And he stopped. But you kind of get a picture of what that was like for Abraham. And Abraham was stopped from killing his son. God didn't stop for his son being killed. Because that's how, why Isaac was saved is because his son would die as the sacrifice. My mother's going to understand it, but fathers maybe especially, you picture what it would be like if you had to lay your son or your daughter on the altar and you were required to kill them. Says in our study guide, one final similarity between the flood and Judgment Day. Just as the only survivors of the flood were found within the ark, the only survivors of Judgment Day will be those found in Christ Jesus. In the 1700s, a famous hymn was written. In a striking way, it reminds us that just as Noah, his family and the animals survived by hiding inside the ark, we will only survive Judgment Day by hiding in Jesus Christ. And hiding is kind of a hard word because we, it brings about fear. And we hide in Christ not out of fear. When we hide in Christ, we have confidence in Him. And they bring up this, I think this hymn kind of brings that out. Somebody want to read the verses of Rock of Ages there? It's printed in your study guide?
Rock of ages, left for me. Let me hide myself in thee. Let the water and the blood from thy ribbon side which flow, be of sin the double cure, cleanse me from its guilt and power.
We hide in Him and we have confidence, confidence that He will protect us, that He is that rock of refuge. Comments or questions on anything we've talked about so far? I actually should ask Faith, do one of you guys to sing that?
I was humming it here.
That's one, that's one of my grandma's favorites.
Yes.
It's more Western movies and maybe other songs.
Somebody want to read underneath the heading where it says Noah the Herald, that little paragraph there?
The flood account in Genesis six through nine doesn't explicitly say Noah warned his neighbors of the coming flood. The flood account in Genesis six through nine doesn't explicitly say Noah warned his neighbors of the coming flood. But second Peter two through five calls him a herald of righteousness. Making it clear he did. While overseeing construction on the ark, he warned his family, neighbors and higher hands of the deluge to come. As the construction of the ark near completion, its massive dimensions powerfully predict the global scale of the coming disaster.
What is a herald? Besides being a man's name?
A crier. Town crier.
So what was that?
Announcer?
Yeah, a proclaimer. And uh, as he talks about the construction of the ark, does anybody remember what the size of the ark, you said the size of the ark was? Three hundred to five hundred. A football field and a half. If it's five hundred feet. So how does that size work as a silent sermon? Cause that's our first question here. What way was the ark itself a silent sermon about the coming flood?
The size of it.
It was going to be a huge deal.
Against the water.
What, what, what was that, Ruth?
The size of the ark. When you think of the size of the ark, you would think of the amount of water that it was gonna float in.
Right.
Kind of a big flood. When they saw that ark, they should have thought of a big flood. I don't know if I'm getting ahead of it or not, but what entered my mind right now and what did those people think when all these animals started showing up?
That's the next question.
Started putting them in the cages.
But Eric's got a great point. If it was, it wasn't going to be a, a big amount of water, you wouldn't need such a big boat, right? It just had a canoe. It wouldn't need to be as sturdy, sturdily built as it was. Ruth, what did you have?
Just said it was going to be a huge deal. It was a huge boat. It was a huge thing.
So not only was the size, but the undertaking to build it said something, Ken?
Well, I imagine in those days, if we think of the previous world as, as primitive, probably trading uh, uh, vessels about the size of Columbus boat and uh, fishing vessels were about the biggest thing on the, on the seas. Then, and uh, I mean, this thing was huge. I mean, it took up. He had probably had to buy up extra land just to put the thing on.
Will, will
On a model Columbus's boat at Columbus, Ohio. Could somebody Google, Google and see how, how many feet long Columbus's boat was?
One of the handouts I had shows you the sizes of different boats. I don't have it on me. But if you look back at some of the handouts I gave you, and if we have time, there's, there's a great handout we can look at. It's large ships of antiquity. And what that talks about is, um, as far as man's technology for building boats before the modern era, there were huge boats. Huge boats.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Where did Noah actually build the boat at?
Um, it was, it was a place called Gary's Garage. It's where they had pre-flood corvettes at. We, we don't know because we're not really sure where Noah lived.
I mean, was it like in Egypt or was it in?
There's a gopher tree in India. So I don't know. Maybe it was around there.
He built it in America. He was America.
I'm just wondering if he built this thing in the middle of the desert.
The first, the first ark was built in Dearborn, uh, the judge tell you.
Henry Ford. Yeah, we don't, we don't know because we don't really know what the land looked like back then. Uh, it's been talked about because of the flood and the water bursting up from the ground. It could have totally changed the land and the continents and where they sit. Um, and we don't know, uh, if the holters at that time was like a subtropic forest or there was different seasonal places. We don't know.
Well, it had to be around someplace where there was a lot of gopher wood.
Right. But once again, um, was there maybe gopher wood all over the place and not so much after the flood? We don't know. Sorry, Gary. You'll have to ask Jesus when you get there.
Okay, I will.
So one more thing about the size. How, what kind of a witness would this ark be thinking of the size?
Nobody could miss it.
No.
It's kind of like your house, the Empire State Building sitting next to each other.
Yeah. So, you know, I don't know how far and wide people were spread and maybe not everybody visually saw it, but I bet it was talked about. So just the ark itself was a sermon. And, and Noah, the fact that Noah kept working on it was a sermon about his faith. So our next question, how did the arrival of all those birds and land animals add to Noah's witness?
God brought him.
As opposed to
He went out and got him himself.
Noah rounding up animals?
Yeah.
How successful would that be? Would Noah have known which animals?
He would have had to live another five hundred years.
Again, God was in control.
God was in control. But can you imagine the people that don't know what's going to happen or don't believe what Noah's been telling them and all of a sudden these animals are coming by God's direction and getting on the ark? What kind of a witness is that? Do you think that ever happened before?
Well, that, that's where the old adage build it and they will come came from.
Yeah. That's a great, that's a great analogy, Bonnie. The animals were intelligent enough for, to get on the, but the people weren't. You can't fix stupid.
Could you imagine the people that were like noticing these pairs of animals, different ones going up? They're what's going on? How come these animals are doing this? You know?
I've never seen that one before.
No, they would say if he's scratching her head, I wonder what's going on, you know?
The animal's getting along in that one.
Yeah, lions and everything.
As a little bonus here, there was one other time all the animals came to mankind. When was it?
When Adam named them.
Yeah. All the animals came to Adam. Now you talked about them not, them getting along. We don't have anybody mediating before the flood. So that would include animals. So animals at that time weren't killing each other to eat. What were what for? Animals? They were to fill, fill God's creation at that time. At that time, no, other, other than in part of God's creation. I mean, his, when you look at the, you know, we don't believe in the circle of life in, in, in the way that Middle Eastern religions do. Uh, but everything kind of works together to support one another and take out the fact of, of you need uh, smaller animals for larger animals to eat. Animals kind of work together. It's all part of God's plan. So how that worked, I don't know because we don't know how, what it was like. But man wasn't mediating until after the flood. And the other thing we have after the flood is we have God saying the animals will be afraid of man. So before that, there wasn't the same kind of fear that animals had of man.
Well, man probably wasn't afraid of them either then.
Right. They coexisted.
So you could have a lot of important.
I don't know about that.
You know, you, you bring up a good point, but I, I read something somewhere about, um, you think of before the fall. Take an animal like a skunk. Before the fall, before there was any sin, everything was working good. How can you? How, how can you argue or how can you say that the skunk needed that smell? If nothing was gonna attack it?
He brought it in.
It was just something that
Well, yeah, evolved within the species. Or you can say two things. It had a good use that got, that got turned bad when sin came into the world. Or God knew that that animal was gonna need it sometime in the future and it just laid dormant. So the ability was there, but the skunk wasn't spraying until after the fall. And then probably all the skunks were pissed at Adam. So they came up and sprayed him with good. Take this.
You know, fear of man, in a lot of animals, I've noticed that it's a uh, acquired. This, uh, animals been abused by man, they'd be afraid of all people. You know? And uh, a good example of that was Bonnie and I were at Wish Gardens one vacation and uh, we were walking around down by the, where the tigers were and they were down in this pit. And she says, I'm, she's trying, she's just starting up with the cameras and she says, I like to get a good picture of that, of that tiger. I says, you got him in focus? She says, yeah, but he won't turn his head. I says kitty, kitty, kitty. And that tiger turned his head. And she got a couple of good pictures there. And she says, how did you know he was gonna turn his head? I says, because they were all kittens at one time and probably, probably raised by people. And so that's the reverse of, of fear, but getting along with man. I said, somebody, somebody raised that thing until it was too big to handle.
I'm gonna interject this. I'm, I'm gonna interject this, Ken, when you said kitty, kitty, the lion looked and he said, hmm, dinner.
Some clown is up there calling us.
It says, uh, in the next paragraph. Below that uh, bullet point we just talked about, undoubtedly Noah pointed out the ark and the animals pleading with his neighbors to come and find salvation with them in the ark. Sadly, none but his immediate family heeded God's warning and took shelter. Take a break from this for a minute and go to one of our handouts. Uh, look for the one that says hy- hibernation, migration and the ark. So here we have all these animals coming to the ark. Inquiring minds want to know how and why. We know that who brought the animals? Who was the one responsible? How did he do it? We don't know. Scripture doesn't tell us. So we, we can use some of the wisdom that God has given us from this standpoint and conjecture maybe. We can have theories, but we can't definitively say one from another. And so what a lot of people have done is, is looked at animal behavior now. Which is not a sure thing because animals we know behave differently than before the flood because now they have fear of man before then they didn't. But this brings a good, some things to consider. But once again, remember that science, even creation science has a tendency to go too far and explain things that are best left up to the magnificent glory and supernatural working of God. So uh, somebody has that, either read on the screen or from your page, read uh, the opening paragraph and down through discovery up until how it might relate. You can skip over that.
A recent November two thousand seven news item caused a fury of interest among creationists. It was based on an article in the German journal, Natural Sciences, about a marsupial able to hibernate for more than a year. Several people wrote in alter, alerting us to this report. They were presumably keen for us to use it as evidence that animals could have hibernated during the year of the flood. It's worth exploring just how this does or does not add to the
Apologetic.
Apologetic arguments about, about the feasibility of the flood account. First, some more details on the report.
We'll stop there for a moment. Apologetic, uh, that we're not using that word as an I'm sorry, please forgive me. Apologetic is being able to uh, effectively have an answer to people that are questioning the veracity of the Bible in our faith. It's giving a good answer. That's what apologetic says. Go ahead.
The animal concerned was the pygmy possum, a marsupial. This is an opportunistic, non-seasonal hibernator.
So non-seasonal hibernator, it doesn't always hibernate at a certain time of year. Whenever it needs to, for whatever reasons, it goes into hibernation. So it's not like a bear. Go ahead.
In the right circumstances, it is able to put on substantial fat reserves which enable it to go into prolonged torpor. To pour?
Yeah, that's, so that's a state of not much activity. It's kind of like half sleep, not necessarily asleep. But you're not exhibiting a lot of energy. You're kind of in a daze. You're kind of stoned without the drugs.
The research in this instance was directed to seeing whether the pygmy possum, given the right condition, would be able to prolong its hibernation existing only on its own body fat well beyond winter. The outcome was impressive. The prolonged hibernation lasted three hundred and ten days on average in various of the creatures with one reaching three hundred and sixty-seven days.
We said, do you remember we said how long was the total time that they were on the ark? A year and a little bit more, three hundred and sixty-five days. So what might this be telling us? That possibly animals could have been in hibernation for an extended period of time, possibly. And here we have evidence of this in one animal after the flood. Um, so uh, somebody else want to read on how it might relate to the flood account? Read to the bottom of the page.
On the surface, it seems somewhat obvious. Faced with the problem of carrying for thousands of animals per year, it would make things far simpler if the animals went into some sort of prolonged shutdown for most of the journey. For one thing, it would dramatically reduce the amount of food and water required. For example, in the case of the pygmy possum, mentioned above, the average energy expenditure during hibernation was reduced to about twenty-five, two point five percent of water. This in turn drives the waste load way down too.
They wouldn't have to have big shovels to take care of all the crap. Not much going out of the body, not food coming in and not food coming up. Go ahead, continue on there Faithy.
For another, one can imagine the fear and restlessness among all those animals confined in dark quarters for months while the ship was subject to all manner of boat rocking, external forces despite the demonstrated high stability on its portion. Not to mention the sound of driving rain for days on end and presumably wind, waves and thunder too. It's not surprising then that as far back as the classic, the Genesis flood, creationist authors have been suggesting that animals may have entered a state of prolonged hibernation. This suggests, suggestion is perfectly reasonable and the possibility is being, not being questioned here, but to point to some present day hibernation fact, feat. As evidence supporting the flood account is not as simple and straightforward as a quick glance might suggest. Note that even without hibernation of any sort, the ark journey still works despite being a lot more problematic.
Problematic.
For its inhabitants. This is reinforced by the detailed figures and rigorous arguments in
Bad dudes.
Yeah. Noah's ark, a feasibility study in short reason. The issue of hibernation for apologetic purposes is not so much a crucial necessity as it is a helpful measure.
Understand what it's saying there as far as the need to pin this on something like hibernation. Do we have to find something?
No.
No. Could, could it have been kind of a living hell for Noah and his family? What's that?
Unless they took a nap too.
God didn't promise that it was gonna be a, a, a cruise, did he? That it would just be peace and joy for Noah and his family. So we, we don't know what it was like on the ark. We don't have scripture's account.
Probably wasn't Disney World.
Unless what they're saying about this hibernation then, and it might not have just been the animals. To some extent, until the waters receded, then Noah obviously was up throwing birds off of the nobit.
But you know, when it's dark and it's rainy, the boat is rocking, that can be very like, like a baby in the back, in the car seat in the back. It's like they're crying, screaming, screaming, screaming. You go for a ride and they go right to sleep from the motion and the noise.
I think Noah was burning cannabis in there. I think that's why. Although then you get a lot really hungry. So there'd be that problem.
At his age, it'd be easy to take a nap.
Reducing the need for miracles. In pointing to such things as present day hibernation, in fact, in all such ark feasibility studies, one is really trying to minimize the need for supernaturalism, to try to explain it naturally without the need for a miracle. This is an understandable goal to want to avoid multiplying the number of miracles required in some arbitrary fashion. And this is interesting too. This is something I hadn't thought about. That's not to be confused with bowing to naturalism and liberal theology, which likes to say there's no miracles. You can find a natural thing for all the things that have happened. Uh, the description of the flood slash ark in Genesis reinforces what Henry Morris has called the economy of the miracle seen in the Bible in general. God could, for instance, easily have suspended all the animals in Noah's family above the clouds during the flood, even without an ark. Think about that. They didn't need an ark. Could he have done that?
Sure.
Sure, he could have done that. But he chose to use natural laws such as the principles of buoyancy involved in a floating ship. Even then, he could have materialized ready-made ark of safety, but instead he chose to give details, instructions for a presumably long and laborious construction. And we can see some of the reasons why he would do that because you have this great analogy of the ark and the church. Had he not built the ark, that not would not have been there. Had Noah not have had to build the ark, he wouldn't have the same kind of witness. So obviously God knows what he's doing. The absence of a flurry of capricious abracadabra style miracles in the Bible, uh, the apocryphal gospels have an abundance of these. The apocryphal is those, uh, Bible, uh, books that the Catholic Church has that we don't. And they cover the intertestamental time between the Old Testament and the New Testament. They have some of these miracles in there, uh, but we don't consider that to be uh, as, as verifiable or as important. It, it's not true scripture like the rest of the Bible. They're good books, but we don't hold that to be strictly God's word. Anyway, uh, there is one of the hallmarks of authenticity. It makes it the rare special purpose miracle like raising Lazarus from the dead or the feeding of the five thousand stand out all the more. Get that? If God was doing miracles left and right every day, that would be one thing. But when there's not a whole bunch of miracles, even in Jesus' life, then all of a sudden bam, he's feeding five thousand people. Stands out. If he was doing that every single day.
Yeah.
This is why, uh, is part why we feel more comfortable when we have a naturalistic explanation for an ark feasibility problem. Having to postulate miracle after miracle, especially ones the Bible does not mention would seem awkward and would in practice make the Bible account less believable to skeptics. Clearly having the animals go to sleep makes the journey far less problematic. What is being discussed here is an appeal to existing natural instincts as, uh, as part of this drive to minimize the supernatural. But bottom line is God could have done it. He could have done it in ways that we haven't discovered and we don't know yet or may never know until we meet it. It's possible, but once again, avoid the drag of, of Christian scientists to explain away everything that's miraculous. So now let's talk about how they got to the boat. Uh, migration. Somebody want to read the, those paragraphs under migration, a parallel to hibernation?
Creation apologists dealing with the issue of the animals traveling to the ark have similarly sought naturalistic explanations were possible. They often point to the migration instinct in various animals and/or their instinct to travel to safety if there is impending danger. But both here and in the case of hibernation, the appeal to existing instincts is problematic. As we will see, it cannot avoid the need for the miraculous, pure and simple and in substantial doses in fact. First, present day migration instincts are nowhere near universal among animals. So even if God may have used the existing instinct somehow in some species, that still leaves the overwhelming majority of those that needed to be on board, which show a little trace of a vibration instinct. So if supernatural action is needed for that majority, why not the lot? How much then has the instinct argument really helped the explanation? Second, existing instincts do not direct animals to a man-made boat.
That seems pretty logical, doesn't it? When you think about it? Continue on there with third there Norma.
Third, even if all animals had a migratory instinct and even if all were programmed to migrate toward a large man-made vessels, why did only those particular ones from each type make the journey? Clearly, a mighty miracle was involved. We correctly talk of Noah taking the various creatures on board, but it should not be overlooked that these were ones which God sent. Noah did not have to roam the world with lassos and animal traps. In fact, the sight of pairs of animals migrating to the ark would likely have been an awesome testimony to onlookers that the hand of the miracle-working Creator God was here to be seen, notwithstanding the fact that hearts remained hard.
So we, we look at this right here. Could God have used the migratory instincts specifically in the animals he wanted to bring to the ark? He could have. That would be a mixture of using the supernatural and something existing in nature. He could do that. But we don't know if that's what he did. Okay, you, uh, you done there Norma? Can you read a little bit more?
Often the argument is worded that God could have modified existing migratory instincts in certain creatures. Okay, he could have done that and we're not told either way. But it's clear from the earlier discussion that in any case, many animals would have needed to have such instincts specially created at that ti- at the time. And those that already had them, needed them extensively reprogrammed. And then only in those chosen for this journey, the degree of supernatural specificity is so extensive that bringing up the argument in this way seems on analysis to be of little help. Why not accept that God directly and supernaturally commanded the animals he wanted to travel to and board the ark to do so? In short, pointing to some migratory instincts to attempt to make the account more feasible is not exactly an apologetic cool. Does not avoid or in any tangible way migrate the need for supernaturalism despite perhaps giving such an impressed pressure.
Good. We'll get to have a break there Norma. Anybody wants to read back to hibernation? Read down to summary and conclusion. Yes, Bonnie, go ahead.
All of these people that are making up excuses, are they just trying to negate the fact that God did it?
No, I think some of them are, are, science is a gift from God to help us understand his world. And so God gives us science and gives us wisdom to look at the animals now and to, to see uh, instincts of migration and hibernation and, and we can make postulation that maybe this is what happened. So as long as you're saying it's, this could have happened this way, but we don't know for sure. And then also with the great thing about this article, it's saying that even if God used these instincts, there still needed to be supernatural control over it. That's pretty much God honoring. When, when you, when you leave the supernatural out of it and say, well, what probably happened is all the animals had this and it got, and, and, and they, a whole bunch of them came to the ark and Noah turned them away. So there would only be two. I mean, that would be negating the miraculous of God.
It, it just seems to me that they're trying an awful lot of ways to find out if man's understanding, not the fact that God did it.
Yeah, and that's the dangerous part of it, but, um, what's, what scripture doesn't say, we are allowed to use science and wisdom that God has given us to fill in as long as it doesn't stand against scripture anywhere else. So we never want to say that it had to be this way. It's always a theory. It could have been this way. God could have done it this way. But you'd never want to teach, I would never teach this in the Bible classes. This is exactly how it happens. And that's why this, the article and I, yes, you know. And as he said in this article, even if you were to say it was all instinct, it doesn't work without God's miraculous.
Otherwise, I saw the animals at Wish Garden would be going towards cruise ships.
Yes. Maybe they do. Uh, another volunteer to read back to hibernation on that last page. Read down the summary and conclusion.
We will similarly see creationists claim that God could have used or modified existing hibernation instinct. But here too, we cannot escape from the raw fact that to put all those animals to sleep for the year of the flood would have involved a substantial dose of supernaturalism. Many mammals do hyperate, hibernate each year, often for about six months at a time. Even hibernating for half the journey would have helped, of course, but many animals do not hibernate at all. So why should those on the ark hibernate? And why at that particular time? Here too is most redundant to talk of modifying existing instinct since it might have been just as much trouble for God to put the animals directly into a torrid orbit state. Then of course, there is the issue of whether even when put to sleep by God, most of the animals could have had sufficient fat reserves to last them for a year without further searching supernatural help. This is possibly why the observation concerning the pygmy possum stirred some interest. If some animals can induce, be induced to hibernate for up to a year or more without running out of body fuel, then maybe this could have been true for all. But the pygmy possum is already programmed to hibernate. And more importantly, in this context, it is designed with the capacity to fatten up adequately to in anticipation of extended period of time without food or drink. Presumably those creatures which do not hibernate would once again require special intervention that not to the extent needed in anticipation of a year-long journey. Some of us don't have any problem with that.
Ready for a long journey.
I'm cruel. Gained thirty pounds in a week. And so here again, we might ask, why not just go straight to the obvious? God did it supernaturally. We are not talking about any old God here, but about the God of Genesis who created a complex universe including all of its contained migration and hibernation instincts in six earth rotation days in the first place. Though his normal operation in the world today is via what modern science describes as physical laws is certainly not constrained by them. He has described instances in the Bible which is overwritten or perhaps better added to them for special purposes at special times in history. See also miracles science. And the flood certainly was an incredible, incredibly special.
Do you see here outside of the creation account why it's important for us to confess a six-day creation? Same God that created everything in six days. If you believe that, can you believe that he supernaturally got all the animals on the boat? He took care of the problem of them riding on the boat for a year, giving Noah the design and making him able to float it, directing the boat? When you keep in mind, this is the same God that created everything, who knows all of the natural laws and can set them aside at his will or find ways to work with them. That's, it's easy. The flood almost by definition would have a required mixture of natural and supernatural activity, both for its causes and particularly for the survival of the ark and its crew. And the understandable tendency to seek natural explanations wherever possible, one can easily overlook the fact that most animals would not normally and naturally either head off and then board the ark or go to sleep once in there, let alone already have enough fat stored up for most of the journey. To talk about modifying certain instincts, whether migration or hibernation, overlooks and sidesteps the fact that not all animals have those instincts. And for those which do, the degree of specificity and complexity involving in the necessity of reprogramming would seem to make the existence of any previous instinct of almost superfluous. The appeal to existing instincts therefore fall somewhat short of a robust explanation. If one makes that appeal in a way that gives the impression that these mechanisms can be conveniently conscripted in a naturalistic fashion, one risks using it as a largely rhetorical window dressing. In other words, to say it was all natural, God didn't do anything supernatural, doesn't work. And you really are trying to set aside the glory and majesty of God and his working in supernatural ways. One needs to remember that instincts in today's creatures are in any case, there is a result of supernatural programming during the creation. So notwithstanding all the caveats in this article, it would seem still reasonable to point to its present day instincts and discussion on the flood issue, provided that is one does not as a mere analogy to what was required during the flood, rather than giving the impression of a naturalistic blanket solution as has been provided. Helps kind of settle yours, maybe some of the questions you think is, once again, a possibility of what could have happened, but with a great big asterisk, not necessarily so. Best to leave it into the hands of God. And now you have a little bit of apologetic information on your own. If anybody wants to come up and say, how could all those animals? How could, how could they sit there? Why didn't they kill each other? That's information to counter that, don't you? All right. As promised, the next thing I want to deal with is, uh, has Noah's ark been discovered?
No.
No. What, what's, what's that down at the creation museum then?
The manmade one.
You sure? Oh Bonnie, come on. Yeah, we got one right back there. I never knew this. No, I thought it was Mount Ararat.
It ain't made out of gopher wood.
Uh, pull out your, uh, your, hand out the real Noah's ark buried in Turkish mountains. And, uh, you've got on the front there a map and it says, some people believe the original Noah's ark is buried under an ark-shaped formation in eastern Turkey. And it's called the Dur- Durupinar site. If you can't find it, it's on the screen, on the, on the, on the TV. I'll read through this real quick. Uh, it, you know, if you can look this up or I can send you like, there's some great colored pictures here as you can see on the TV.
Did you notice in the picture of the ark that they had a house built on top of the boat?
Yeah.
Creationists have long claimed that Noah's legendary boat is buried beneath the rocky spot known as the Durupinar site. Not everyone is convinced though. The geologist claiming that the mountainous lump is simply an unusual mountain formations. Now a crew led by longtime ark cutter Sam Seretensin say they have an image of whatever's down there according to the Turkish Abdullah Agency. So the Turk- Turkish government is behind this, but you, can you understand why the Turkish government might be willing and not to promote this as being true when they don't really have the evidence? What good would it do for Turkey?
Tourist, tourist money.
The team claims they'll reveal the pictures obtained by sending electric signals underground via cables in a forthcoming documentary about the ark. I searched YouTube and I couldn't find it. This article written, uh, two thousand nineteen.
It's still forthcoming.
So here's, here's a on, on the screen there, here's a picture of what they're talking about. That thing in the middle. See that thing in the middle? Can you see how it kind of maybe looks like possibly a boat or an ark?
Yeah, that boat very.
Creationists have long claimed Noah's ark was buried beneath this rocky spot. Uh, these are actual images. These are satellite images. Uh, they are neither fake nor simulation. They show the entire ship buried underground. That's what this guy sounds like. Next page. According to legend, Noah landed two of every animal onto the hundred fifty meter long ark to save them from the apocalyptic flooding. More than legend, it's truth because it's in the Bible. That's what we would say. In the book of Genesis, the mountains of Ararat is when what is now is eastern Turkey is the region in which Noah's ark comes to rest after the great flood. In the book of Genesis, the mountain of Ararat, in what is now is eastern Turkey in the region in which Noah's ark comes, oh, that's already, I'm repeating myself. A popular focus of many of the searches has been this site. Uh, some creationists claim the bizarre object is the remains of Noah's ship buried deep underground. Well, scientists argue it's a natural form. While scientists argue it's a natural formation. They were created by computer engineer and an archaeologist, as well as a geophysicist, in a bid to study the strange object. Jones and Larson share their discoveries with this guy in the two thousand seventeen documentary. Uh, the Circeson admits that the images aren't necessarily of Noah's ark, they could be another ship entirely. It's a ship, but too early to be called Noah's ark. You see the problem? We don't know when it was built. It, it could have been Noah's ark, or it could have been something that was built long after. Where it's at though, on a mountain? Is it possible though, that right after the flood, that for a while mankind knew where the ark was?
They got off of it. People that were on it could know.
Is it possible that they would build some kind of a shrine or memorial place there to remember what happened?
They had a cemetery.
Yeah, an altar.
Yeah, and, and the one, one thing we're going to watch, we'll see that. So, uh, and the, and the other argument that the ark maybe isn't no longer there is because when they got off the boat, um, trees hadn't had a chance to regrow. And there's a need for wood. And they need to rebuild homes and stuff. So if you need wood, where's the best place to go get it?
There are a lot of it.
So, uh, I'm gonna show you, there's, I have two videos, we'll probably only see one. Uh, but there's at least two, if not more, suggestions on where the ark is. And as I understand it, they're two different places. So we're going to see this one, and, and some of the things they've done, uh, to try to prove that this could possibly be the ark, so. So a little background information on this one. This site is a large aggregate structure on Mount Tenderekan in eastern Turkey. So it's not on Mount Ararat, it's in the Ararat chain of mountains. Which fits because we're told, one of the mountains of Ararat in Genesis, we're not told the mountain. Uh, the site is one point nine miles north of the Iranian border, nine point nine miles southeast of the city that I'm not going to pronounce, and eighteen miles south of the greater Mount Ararat summit, which is the real Mount Ararat. So it's in the area. It's at an elevation of six thousand four hundred to six thousand five hundred feet above sea level, so it's up there.
Yeah.
On June twentieth nineteen eighty-seven, in the mountains of Ararat, Turkey officially recognized the discovery of Noah's ark. Located on a mountainside about fifteen miles south of the volcanic Mount Ararat, the remains of the massive ship were dedicated during a special ceremony. Guest of honor was Ron Wyatt, due to his ten years of research at the site. The story began in nineteen fifty-seven during the Cold War, when aerial photos taken of eastern Turkey while searching for Soviet missile bases revealed a strange boat-shaped formation in the mountains about sixty-three hundred feet above sea level. Life magazine reported on the story after an expedition from the United States went to the site in nineteen sixty. Blowing holes in the strange formation, the members of the team came away with the conclusion that there was nothing there of any archaeological interest. Ron Wyatt, like many others, read the story, but he was of the opinion that the site needed further exploration. There had been many claims of seeing Noah's ark on the volcanic Mount Ararat, but Ron knew that it was a strato-volcano, and he believed that nothing would have been able to survive there. He noted the biblical account of the location of the ark. And the ark rested in the seventh month, on the seventeenth day of the month, upon the mountains of Ararat. Ratu, the biblical Ararat, was a large region in eastern Turkey. This location was certainly feasible. But the factor that captured his interest the most was the length given in the Life magazine story, five hundred feet. Most people were looking for a four hundred and thirty-seven foot Noah's ark based on the Hebrew cubit. But Ron again went to the Bible to learn more. And Moses was learned in all the wisdom of the Egyptians. Moses was the author of the Genesis account of the flood. He would have known the cubit of the Egyptians. The Hebrew cubit didn't come into existence until there was a Hebrew nation after Moses' death. The Encyclopedia Britannica stated, "The Egyptian cubit is generally recognized as having been the most ubiquitous or universal standard of linear measurement in the very ancient world. The royal cubit equals twenty point six two inches." This would mean Noah's ark was much longer than four hundred and thirty-seven feet. Seventeen years after the Life magazine article, Ron finally made the journey to Turkey. When he saw the boat-shaped object, he saw that it looked just like it did in nineteen sixty, and he knew he would need permission to excavate in order to learn anything about what was beneath the surface. So he returned home and enlisted a number of friends to help him pray for an earthquake to reveal more. In late nineteen seventy-eight, he learned of an earthquake in eastern Turkey and returned in August of nineteen seventy-nine. When he arrived, he was overwhelmed by what he saw. The earthquake had dropped the soil around the object and a large crack extended the entire length. He could see what looked to him like the remains of decayed rib timbers along the now exposed sides. Also, he was able to measure the depth of the debris and measure the length. It was five hundred and fifteen feet, or exactly three hundred royal Egyptian cubits. He was now convinced. He carefully combed the surface, looking for evidence that it was a shipwreck. He saw what he believed were petrified structures of an ancient ship whose deck had collapsed. He saw what looked like deck joists and deck support timbers. Of particular interest was the fact that the ship appeared to be impaled on a large outcropping of limestone. He concluded that this indicated that the ship had slid into the rock from another location. Before he made his first trip to Turkey, he had done an experiment in a nearby lake, building mountain configurations out of rocks and floating a boat model by them to see the reaction of the boat. He noted that a crescent shape caused the water to pull the boat into the crescent where the boat remained and gently floated. The present location did not fit with the results of that experiment. So Ron decided to examine the area above the boat shape. The site was in a moving mud flow, so he followed the mud flow up the mountainside. About a mile and a half up, he found a crescent shape of mountains. He saw that the mud flow began up here. When he arrived near the top of the ridge, he found an ancient stele, like an ancient billboard, which depicted the boat shape, the familiar mountain ridge, several birds, and eight faces within the boat shape. Clearly, this was a reference to the ship of Noah and its eight survivors. He noticed a taller mountain peak on the stele that was no longer visible from that location. He concluded that it was a small volcano that had erupted long after Noah's ark had landed, and that it had carried the ship down the mountainside about a mile, where it was impaled on the limestone outcropping, then covered in lava. The lava then encased the ship like a time capsule. The volcano then collapsed after expending its lava and was no longer visible. He then theorized that as the lava began to decay, water seeped in and allowed the remains to be petrified or fossilized by the process called mineral replacement. Molecule by molecule would be washed away from the remains and replaced by molecules from the objects and substances above it. As he examined the area within the crescent shape, he found a large section, a hundred and twenty by forty feet approximately, of what appeared to be fossilized wood in the ground. He believed this to be the bottom of the ship, the original landing site. His conclusion was that when the floodwater subsided, the ark sank into the muddy earth. This held the ship upright. Then God sent the wind to dry the face of the earth. The portion of the ship that sank into the mud was now firmly embedded in the ground. Many years later, when the lava carried the ship down the mountain, the main body of the ship was ripped loose. Only this section remained in their original location. Around this area that Ron believed to be embedded petrified wood, he found specimens of rock which looked very unique to him. He took several samples, along with several specimens from the boat shape below. Back home, he sent them for analysis. The results showed organic carbon, which indicated that the samples were consistent with decayed and fossilized wood. They also contained metals such as iron and aluminum. The analysis of the strange-looking rock Ron had found about a mile and a half above the site by the bottom of the ship was clearly the most exciting. His initial analysis had shown it to be metals and not rock. In nineteen eighty-four, Ron met and became friends with Colonel Jim Irwin, the former astronaut. Colonel Irwin was searching for Noah's ark on Mount Ararat, but he was very gracious and was interested in seeing the boat-shaped site. Ron had brought a metal detector to the site to see if there was a pattern of metal readings. In the presence of Colonel Irwin and others on his team, Ron employed the detectors. He found distinct metal lines down the entire length of the object, while no metal readings were obtained just outside of it. Ron asked Colonel Irwin, who had impressive scientific community connections, if he could have the strange specimen tested. Colonel Irwin sent the specimen to Los Alamos National Labs, where geophysicist John Baumgartner performed the analysis. The results of that analysis captured Baumgartner's interest. The specimen contained manganese, also titanium and aluminum, among others. And these were not in the form found in nature. Due to the sophistication of the metals, he questioned whether a missile had crashed on the mountainside and Ron had found the remains. The exciting evidences of the metal lines and the analysis of the specimens brought two new researchers into the work. Dr. Baumgartner and David Fassell, a marine salvage expert who knew all of the ships and their construction. They both joined the team.
Oh, look at that. Oh, well wait a minute. Well, let me get a close-up of that. Kind of, um,
You want my hand in there for?
Yeah, just to point at those little flakes of iron that are coming out, like right there. There and there. That's a strong reading. Well.
I'd say that, that, uh, those frames right there.
Okay. Keep walking. Do you want, do you want a measuring tape to measure these things, how far apart they are?
John is a scientist. Might I take the liberty here to ask you, uh, do you really honestly believe, uh, that you have been on the remains of Noah's ark?
I have no, no doubt in my mind, there's, this has to be a man-made structure, it's full of metal. The metal is, uh, has a regular pattern to it. And, uh, the size of the thing and the shape of the thing is, uh, such that it's, it's almost certainly a, a large boat.
Dr. Baumgartner and Ron scanned the entire site with three different types of metal detectors. Placing rocks at each metal reading, they then attached tapes to show the lines. This exciting evidence also attracted the interest of ABC's Twenty Twenty.
The boat-shaped site was first found and photographed by a Turkish army captain back in nineteen fifty-nine. It was quickly explored and dismissed as a freak of nature. But Wyatt, an amateur archaeologist, rekindled interest in it a few years ago. He brought in Dave Fassell, a marine salvage expert to assess it. The doomsday mountain team brought in some high technology to explore the oldest legend of man. They began scanning their site with a molecular frequency generator. It's a device used by surgeons to pinpoint cancer tumors, and it's been used by Fassell to locate underwater treasure. This time, the molecular frequency generator began to pick up a unique pattern of iron lines beneath the earth.
Okay, bring that one up.
They began placing ribbons along those lines. The finished shape outlined by the ribbons was that of a huge ship, the approximate length and width of Noah's ark as described in the Bible. The fascinating field of ribbons soon attracted higher academic interest.
That looks like iron, okay?
Dr. John Baumgartner, a physicist with Los Alamos Laboratories, sent samples back to the lab for analysis and confirmed that the metal they were tracing with the ribbons was indeed iron. With the width and the length known, the only remaining question was depth. By locating the depth of the hull, they could determine if the boat-shaped object had the cargo capacity described in the biblical ark. To resolve this final issue, Wyatt and Fassell brought geologist Tom Finner to Turkey with his company's heavy-duty subsurface radar equipment. Gear like this located the black box cockpit recorder on the floor of the frozen Potomac River after the Air Florida crash. It was here, several miles short of the boat-shaped site, that a waiting game began for Finner and the others. The party needed a final go-ahead from the Turkish government to complete their probe of doomsday mountain. The restrictions of martial law left the American explorers isolated from the outside world, not even a telephone.
Anyway, we're gonna hang in like a smell on a skunk, go, nothing left, get this done.
Hanging like the smell on a skunk. The Turkish government stopped the exploration, what now?
Since we were there, Barbara, things have cooled down, and they've sent their own team of scientists in to take a look at this site. It's a very fascinating location.
While Turkish scientists and archaeologists did their own research, Ron and his associates continued their work. The next step was subsurface interface radar.
There's the longitudinal bulkhead, you ought to see him popping out, Ron.
Yeah, there they are.
Here, there's another one. There's the key line right there.
Yeah.
All around, the lines are there. The lines are there.
Okay, we're gonna walk over. Take a look.
Leave it, leave it running so everybody knows that we're not cheating here, right?
You got it.
Okay, now, this is the wealth, the west bulkhead. Okay, can you look through there and?
All right.
This is the west bulkhead.
All right.
That was over there. And he walked easterly. Here we start getting the longitudinal bulkheads, here, 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 here.
Okay.
You see there how it shows up?
Right.
The initial scans were very impressive, showing internal structure consistent with bulkheads and rooms. But to be sure they were interpreting the data correctly, Ron took the scan printouts to Geophysical Survey Systems, the developer and manufacturer of the radar.
This data is not, is, does not represent natural geology, it's, it's a man-made structure. These reflections are occurring very periodic, too periodic to be ran- These reflections are occurring very periodic, too periodic to be random nat- natural type interface.
There was no longer any doubt that this was the remains of something man-made. In late 1986, the Turks announced their decision. The ceremony was set for June 1987. During that ceremony, the governor asked Ron to demonstrate the radar on-site for the journalists and military officials. When Ron showed them a readout that he said looked like an intact timber, the governor then instructed a soldier to dig right there. What emerged was this petrified section of fossilized hand-wrought timber. Sectioning showed it to be laminated wood. Five layers of timber glued together with pitch. Clearly, visible oozing from the end. This fossilized specimen shows that rivets were used in its construction. Their analysis showed that they contained iron, titanium, and aluminum, among other things. Very sophisticated alloys that would be resistant to water. Specimens falling out from the lower end of the ship, identified as slag by an expert in metallurgy, indicated to Ron that Noah filled the hull with slag material from his metal production of the fittings used to build the ark. More complete radar scans revealed a ship, although damaged and collapsed in places, a very intelligent, modern design with a ramp system at the door which led to each level. In 1990, Ron performed what he called a mini excavation, where he took shovels and bent the blades into a giant razor. He and his associates then shaved off a very thin layer from one section, smoothing it to show the color difference between the structure members and the matrix. By faith, Noah, being divinely warned of things not yet seen, moved with godly fear, prepared an ark for the saving of his household by which he condemned the world and became heir of the righteousness which is according to faith.
Part of the recording, it goes out. We're, we're, we're about at the end of it. There is, I found one other one. And, uh, this one, it, it was, it was, it was a video that was recorded before this. Um, I think back in 2008. And I believe it was in a different, uh, place, um, because the structure they're looking at is encased in ice. But within this, like glacial ice, there's a boat, uh, of some kind. And there's layers, so, um, we don't know. Number one, we don't know when these things were built. This could have been a ship that was built after Noah. It could have been some kind of a monument that was built to resemble the ark and left there, but we don't know.
Way up by the mountain, they just put it there.
Well, they would wanna put it near where the ark was found. Uh, the original ark might have been destroyed for its timber, but perhaps later on, um, they wanted some kind of a marker to remind people because there wasn't any writing. So it was all verbal storytelling. What better way to verbal story, storytell than to have some kind of... And you know, it's interesting, those, those things that they showed where it was, uh, uh, the marker with eight people and all that.
Yeah.
But how long after, we, we don't know.
I thought it was interesting when they asked that man if he'd found Noah's Ark. He answered questions, but he didn't say yes.
It's some kind of a man-made object, but we don't know that it's exactly that one. Uh, one of the things we didn't have time to look at, but it's one of the handouts I gave you, it talks about, uh, ships of antiquity. Just look through that sometime. In fact, look at the last one that it mentions. Um, now, this is obviously after Noah's Ark, but it's a huge, like 500-foot ark, or, or ship that was built, uh, before modern construction tools, so... Questions or comments on anything we've studied throughout this?
Video, very interesting.
It was, wasn't it?
I remember the astronaut going there.
Do you remember, do you remember why the astronaut was involved?
Cause he seen it from space.
He seen it from space. He saw this figure from space, and it made him start to wonder.
Are they not excavating that anyway?
I don't know, uh...
The government's changed to a more, uh, communist-leaning... They got a guy right now, he won't even talk to us.
Yeah, and plus the, the, the religion there is Muslim.
Yeah.
So they're not gonna, you know, but they, they understand that, that they believe the first part of the Bible, huh?
Three miles to Noah's Ark, right there on the street sign, just like you're going to Castle Rock.
But, you know, there's, to, to, to welcome, to welcome, right, buddy, to welcome further excavation, always in the back of their mind would be, what if it proves that it's not? And now, all of a sudden, the money dries up because people don't wanna come see something that's a fake. So it almost behooves you not to go too far.
So, in the Muslim religion, they have, they have a Noah.
Yeah, they, they generally believed the first part of the, the Bible up until Abraham. And then at the point where the Bible says that Isaac was the child of choice, they say that it's been corrupted since then because Ishel obviously was the child. Any, any other questions or comments?
When they asked about that being Noah's Ark, he said theoretically he believed that was.
But once again, it's some kind of a man-made structure, but when it was built, we don't know. It could have been, people were floating boats long after that, but Ken brings up a good point. That high up on a mountain? Has water ever gotten that high on the mountain again? I mean, the earth, the Lord said he would never flood the world, so...
Well, the one theory was the first point.
Yeah.
Wasn't the lava that burst the, the wood?
Depends how fast that went down the mountain.
Yeah. Uh, if it, if it floated on top. But you're right, when it encased it, but, but as, as the lava flows down the mountain, it cools. Um, so yeah, it might have burnt it somewhat, maybe the outer layer, but I don't know, I'm not a geologist.
But you know, even like up north, we had the fires, you know, the cast lumber, it's monumental area where the fire was up there. And it was like surprising because the trees were still there, okay? So, necessarily totally burned it up.
This other video, and if you, you go to YouTube, you can search on, have they discovered Noah's Ark? And you'll see this one I'm talking about, encased in ice. And, uh, there's pictures of intricate building design. I mean, like joints that were built into the wood and, and posts to fit together, all kinds of neat things with it.
You know, with all the metals that they're finding there that are in, in, uh, in a relatively pure form, civilization before the flood had to be advanced to some extent. More than what they were in the Bible.
Yeah. So, yeah, they weren't knuckle-dragging, very good, buddy. Yeah, we, we're given, we're given the basic outline of the composition of the ark, but, but what else they use beside, beside gopher wood? If they use metal, we don't know. Very possibly it could have been... Anything else?
Very interesting topic.
Very what?
Interesting topic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we've got, uh, two more to go. We have a session three and a session four, so a week from tonight, we'll start session three. And I just remember what it focuses on. I know the fourth session is the aftermath, so it talks about after the, the boat lands. Let's see, it was Noah, the man, the ark, I think, I think the flood is the third one. Anywho, it should be interesting.
Very interesting.
Thank you all for coming, and I, I hope this, uh, it, it, especially the take-home practice and supernatural work of God and, and the way the ark is symbolic of the church and the way the flood is symbolic of the last day. And because eight people were saved by faith, we have nothing to worry or concern ourselves about on the last day because we are safe within the ark that's the church. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for sending your son so that by his death and resurrection, we are safe in the ark that is the church. His body, saved by grace through faith. Keep us steadfast in that faith, keep us safe in this ark that is the church. And until the door closes on the last day, move us to go out and to invite others in because there is a judgment day coming, there is an end of the world coming. And those that don't believe now, through faith, can and will be saved. We leave that up to your power, Holy Spirit. Just help us to be good heralders and proclaimers of your truth of the gospel. In Jesus' name we pray. Thank you, everybody, y'all have a good night.
Good Sunday.
Thank you.
Good Sunday, Gary.
Night.
Thank you for the fellowship.
Thank you, bye.